And I've, yeah, everyone is okay, sitting at the table?
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
You've got Mike.
Uh, mics everywhere.
Thanks.
So it's a pleasure to be here this evening and talk with all of you and get this project off on a good fit, or a good start with the Planning Commission and City Council. We actually just several weeks ago started working with Evan and Robin efficiently moved through contracting and are together and underway on the best available science review, looking at sort of necessary updates for the critical areas regulations, and also updates to state guidance for shoreline management that might have implications for policy changes and regulatory changes within the city. Tonight, as Evan said, I think we're hoping to lay a foundation primarily focused on critical areas, and then also how critical areas and shoreline, sort of the shoreline jurisdiction, shoreline management work together within the city to ensure that everyone sort of has a solid foundation to start off on, and then also to gather initial, any initial questions, comments, input that you have on specific topics along the way. I asked Evan before we started if there were any questions that you had, sort of whether or not sort of that discussion and interjections could come during the presentation, and it definitely always is my preference to kind of have that sort of dialogue. So definitely, please do interject, interrupt, and we can hopefully start to dig in and then come back to things as necessary once the presentation's complete. So let's hopefully this works. There we go. So a quick overview of our presentation this evening. Just want to introduce not only myself, but the full consultant team, including Jessica sitting next to me. The quick overview of this project and sort of where it's coming from, from as far as state requirements, how and how it fits together as a policy update and a regulatory update within the city. And then digging into sort of what are critical areas specifically within Mercer Island. There's a fairly wide-ranging list of items that have to do with the natural environment and also hazards, and so going through each of them one by one to sort of ensure that we have that foundation. And for each of them, thinking about how the current approaches work to protecting those critical areas to ensure both protection of the natural environment and ensuring that there's sort of appropriate considerations of human safety and property safety as development occurs. And getting into a little bit of discussion about what best available science is and how that has to be used through this update process. So quickly, just to introduce the consultant team. Both Jessica and I are with Environmental Science Associates. We're based, we're both in the Seattle office of ESA, which I don't know if anyone's sort of in the environmental industry, but has even deeper roots that go back to Adolphson Associates before we became part of ESA. We have offices up and down the West Coast, but have decades of experience updating critical areas regulations and shoreline master programs across Western Washington and really across the state. But focusing our sort of core is on the Puget Sound region. We have experts in streams, wildlife, wetlands, and natural resources policy, and have been supporting Mercer Island for the last year and a half or so as an on-call environmental consultant, primarily doing a review of development proposals, so ensuring that as those development proposals are coming in, that critical areas are appropriately identified and protected consistent with your existing requirements. So that brings us a little bit of familiarity from the get-go. And then teaming with us is Aspect Consulting. They're not here this evening, but are based on Bainbridge Island and do geo-hazard review, analysis, and management. So that's looking at landslide hazard areas, steep slopes, erosion hazard areas, those sorts of things. And also have hydrogeologists that are experts in management of groundwater resources, and that fits into the critical areas update in terms of critical aquifer recharge areas, which we'll get into in a bit more detail. And they recently supported the CAO update in the city of Bainbridge Island, which does present some similar issues with regards to geo-hazards and aquifer recharge areas that you're dealing with here. So this just shows kind of the structure of our team. I have been with ESA for 12 years and managing this project for the consultant team, working closely with Evan and Robin at the city, and will probably be the face that the Planning Commission sees most frequently. I have, most of that time, have been supporting jurisdictions around the Puget Sound with SMP updates and critical areas updates. I have a background in fisheries science and floodplain management and environmental policy. So really, these sorts of projects are kind of the bread and butter of what I do and enjoy doing for Puget Sound communities. I grew up on the north end of Lake Washington and Lake Forest Park and spent my childhood playing around in streams and wetlands, run, stretching out from my parents' backyard. So definitely been plugged into this community for a long time. And Jessica, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jessica Redman, also with ESA, as you know by now. I will be the...
Just want to make sure it's on. Sorry.
All right. I'll be the deputy project manager. I've been with ESA for a little over four years, I believe. My background is in fisheries, environmental policy, and wetland science. I've worked in the city on a lot of the development proposals or the third-party review, so pretty familiar with the current code. I mostly work in wetlands, but I will be presenting some of the critical areas, just an overview on a few of the critical areas that occur in the city.
Perfect, and I think the only other folks to highlight, Teresa Vanderburg actually has been with ESA and Adolphson long enough to date back to the last time that there was a significant update of your critical areas regulations and was contracted by the city to support the best available science review at that time. So definitely bring some of that historical perspective to our effort, and she's a, PWS is professional wetland scientist, and that's definitely kind of the core of her technical background, but she's been at environmental consulting in the Northwest for probably the better part of three decades and loves this kind of project, so she'll be eager to jump in and help us figure out some of the trickier policy issues along the way as they arise. And then the Aspect Consulting team includes Dave McCormack, who's the engineering geologist, really sort of brings that expertise when it comes to the landslide erosion and other geo-geotechnical hazard areas. And then Eric Miller, who's the hydrogeologist, so he'll be leading the charge from a technical perspective on establishing standards for critical aquifer recharge areas. Oh, that's all right. I'll get the hang of this. So to kind of provide a kind of a big-picture project overview as to why we're here tonight and kind of why the city is charged with protecting critical areas and establishing a shoreline management, shoreline master program, that has, they both have a basis in state law. So it's the Growth Management Act, which many of you I'm sure are familiar with, and the Shoreline Management Act are sort of the two primary laws at a state level that roll down to jurisdictions, so cities and counties, to ensure that there's appropriate environmental policies and protections regulations in place to ensure that development is occurring sort of in an appropriate way to sort of the greater public good, or that support water resources, water supplies, public access to recreation areas and shoreline environments, and/or necessitate a special, a special level of protection to ensure that development doesn't create hazards in the future. That's really coming in on the geo-hazard piece, and also some considerations on shoreline zones. So those two laws are administered by the Washington State Department of Ecology. They sort of take the charge in setting guidelines that establish the expectations that every jurisdiction has to meet. And I think the Shoreline Management Act dates back to 1969, I believe, and the Growth Management, Evan might know better than me.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Ninety-two, yeah. And Growth Management Act is, I would, it applies everywhere. It's sort of, so it's for all urban areas across Western Washington and the Puget Sound Core have to be planning under the Growth Management Act. And the key document that the city has that does that is the Comprehensive Plan, which was relatively recently updated in Mercer Island, some parks, so there's a whole, yeah, whole variety, housing's another good one. So all of those elements sort of dictate and provide goals and policies for sort of how future growth is to occur in the city. And a lot of those policies have some relevance to management of natural resource areas and the natural environment. I think a primary section within the code is the land use element, or a primary section within the Comprehensive Plan, I should say, is the land use element. There is one goal there, land use goal number eighteen, which is all about the protection of natural environment, to continue to be a priority in all Mercer Island development. And then there's a series of policies that are established under that. I don't think you can just look there, though. There's also policies elsewhere within the Comprehensive Plan that ensure that stormwater management consider, for example, considers sort of how that runoff affects streams and wetlands, how land use, other sort of characteristics of land use ensure that there's sort of an appropriate intensity of development adjacent to shoreline areas and to streams. So it's definitely, that policy document kind of sets the direction for updating the regulations, and it's also that policy document that the state looks to, to ensure that there's sort of the appropriate measures being taken by the city to implement the Growth Management Act. The Shoreline Management Act applies to that, for Mercer Island, sort of the outer ribbon of your island along the Lake Washington shoreline. It's a 200-foot zone, and it's sort of an extra level of emphasis that's necessary for that shoreline area due to the significance of those shoreline areas as resources for the public, and whether that be recreational resources, environmental resources. I'm trying to think what else I'm, there's, yeah, those are the two, the two most important. And so the Comprehensive Plan actually integrates the shoreline master program policies straight into the Comprehensive Plan as a shoreline element, and that body of regulations was, went through a comprehensive update in Mercer Island, I think which was adopted in 2015, so relatively recently, and that was based on a large set of updated guidelines from the State Department of Ecology that gave a lot of heartburn for jurisdictions across Western Washington, I'm sure, including Mercer Island. It was kind of a game changer. So this round of updates is, it's somewhat of a lighter touch to ensure that some changes in state guidelines have been addressed, and also to provide the city really an opportunity to make sure that the policies with, and the regulations within the shoreline master program are still consistent with your objectives as a community for appropriate uses and environmental protection within that shoreline zone.
The 200 feet, that's where the water touches the shore in 200 feet out, or does it start a...
We call that the state requires that we update our SMP regulations, our shoreline regulations, every eight years. The due date for that next update is June of 2019, which is why we're actually starting it now. The thought here is that we would look at essentially two things. Any changes in state law or case law that are relevant to these Mercer Island shoreline jurisdiction that have occurred between our last update and 2019. And secondarily, looking at incorporating our critical area regulations into the shoreline master program. So the way the state has constructed these laws, we actually have to physically adopt our critical area regulations into the shoreline jurisdiction. Otherwise, we would be operating under our now-current critical area regulations, and we'd have two sets of rules for essentially the same kind of property in any given situation. And then I'll admit, there's probably a third item that's on my radar to bring to the Planning Commission and the City Council, which is a little bit of cleanup to our existing regulations, so I'm not anticipating major policy shifts or changes. But there are a couple areas in that draft, or in that current regulation, where the terminology is not quite precise. This is kind of in the nature of the code cleanup exercise we're engaged in at the moment. But to me, that's the scope of the SMP update, is really those three things.
Yeah, I think that was a perfect summary, and I think, you know, I was, I was hoping that some of you were around for the previous round of the SMP update, so if you remember back to that, there was a whole slew of technical studies that were required, and inventory of all of the shoreline conditions, a restoration plan that had to be developed. And there was a lot of state guidance for what had to be included in all of those technical documents, and what had to be updated within sort of the previous code versions. And I will say that the first aspect of what Evan was just talking about in terms of those changes in state requirements since your last update are very minor compared to the previous round. And from our review of them, they primarily have to do with things like aquaculture on marine shoreline, sort of issues, specific issues that probably aren't going to be too relevant in Mercer Island. So as far as that, those state, those new state requirements, there's very few that are going to have any relevance for this effort, this update effort. So it really is the cleanup that Evan was talking about and the opportunity to ensure consistency with critical areas regulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, I could have jumped maybe to this a little quicker based on one of the last questions, but this just is just a depiction of that shoreline extent extending 200 feet from Lake Washington. So imagining this is just a little portion of Lake Washington on an abeyment on the island, and you have that 200-foot zone, and it really, what I think this is helpful to highlight is that any wetlands or other critical areas, so tributary streams, geologically hazardous areas that occur within that 200-foot shoreline jurisdiction, as Evan was saying, have to be regulated through the shoreline master program, whereas anything outside of that 200-foot zone is sort of, the critical areas regulations apply directly. To maintain that consistency, the approach that we're taking with this update, and I think that the city has wanted to maintain as much consistency in land use regulations and environmental protections across the city, is to establish critical areas regulations that can be adopted directly into the shoreline master program. So that way, even though they're integrated by reference, there's largely consistent standards occurring everywhere. Of course.
So does that integration of the critical areas into SMP make the critical area ordinances any more strict than they would be otherwise?
That is a very good question. I think that there are a couple of spots where there could be slight tweaks to the critical areas regulations that make it more strict from an environmental perspective. And that, from our experience, we've seen that as necessary to meet the higher bar that the State Department of Ecology applies within shoreline jurisdiction. So they actually, within shoreline jurisdiction, the state has review and approval authority on the SMP, so to kind of get it through their review and approval, they definitely can be a little tighter to the guidance that they provide, especially for things like wetlands. So for an example, it could just be a slight difference in allowances for things like stormwater facilities or trails within a wetland buffer. So within shoreline jurisdiction, you might have to provide more of a buffer before you can have that trail or, or critical area, or stormwater facility adjacent to a wetland, whereas outside of shoreline jurisdiction, there might be a little bit more flexibility within the code. Yeah, of course. And that's definitely, that's getting into kind of the details of, you know, when we're kind of at the end of the day figuring out exactly that language that integrates the critical area standards that's going to get through Ecology's review and maintain as much consistency as we can. That's where we sit down with the Department of Ecology and kind of explain the rationale, the thinking behind why certain allowances are in the code the way, the way they are. So just highlighting the city's natural environment and kind of why it is important to protect these resources. I think, you know, you all are probably much more familiar with, than me, with the beautiful parklands and the stream corridors, the watercourse corridors that wind through the residential neighborhoods across the island, and also the steep slopes that I think are pretty characteristic around, sort of not within that 200-foot zone necessarily, but even extending further inland in, across the city, and kind of the, the less developed conditions that are associated with them that provide habitat for birds and other wildlife. So, you know, there's, there's a variety of parks. Luther Burbank up at the north end, which actually has one of the sort of nicest wetlands associated with the Lake Washington shoreline that I think remains in the city. Pioneer Park, other parks across the city. And then also, the two pictures are on the right are from recent reviews that we've done for development proposals, where you're seeing these relatively small and sometimes seasonal watercourses draining through existing residential neighborhoods and through people's backyards as they make their way down to the Lake Washington shoreline. So the, all these features, I think, create the, the natural environment that we're really focused on kind of understanding and ensuring that there's appropriate protection for within the city. Just to highlight some of the wildlife that's common here, a lot of it is probably what you see as bird species, the woodpeckers and eagles and herons that are, you know, populating your shorelines and those ravines and forested areas across the city. From a habitat perspective, I think that's kind of built into these protections, especially for the wetlands, the streams, and the shoreline buffers that are being considered. So what are critical areas? They, as defined by the State Growth Management Act, are essential, areas that are essential to preserving our natural environment and protecting the public's health and safety. So they aren't, this, a jurisdiction doesn't have an opportunity to decide what critical areas they want to protect. They're sort of established zones that are built directly into the Growth Management Act. Within Mercer Island, those include geologically hazardous areas, which we'll get into in more detail, but they kind of break down into a couple different subcategories. Watercourses, which are otherwise, you know, known as streams, but the existing regulations in the city refers to them as watercourses. Wildlife habitat conservation areas, so those are other areas besides streams that are associated with a specific habitat or species of local importance. And we'll touch on sort of what, what the existing regulations identify as wildlife habitat conservation areas. Wetlands, and we're definitely going to dig into them in a bit more detail to sort of ensure that sort of there's a pretty common understanding of how they can occur in the landscape in a place like Mercer Island. And then finally, critical aquifer recharge areas. The only additional one that the Growth Management Act identifies as floodplains, but floodplains aren't something that's mapped within Mercer Island, so that's one spot where there's not need for, for regulations.
Are all watercourses above ground?
So we'll get into that in a little bit, but currently, the city's standards do protect piped watercourses that were, so a naturally occurring watercourse that was historically put in a culvert or otherwise piped before these regulations were in place are afforded some protection by your current standards. And that's something that is a bit unique to Mercer Island. It's not unheard of, and I think it can be something that we explore as we move forward to understand kind of what the policy intent of those standards were previously and whether or not it's something that wants to be maintained moving forward.
I guess a different twist to the question is, if you drive around Merson on the ways, east or west, there are steep slopes, and in some areas you see water coming out of the middle of the hill.
Yes.
Are those defined as watercourses?
So yeah, your question was a little different. So those areas are either going to be, I would imagine, defined as watercourses, so like sort of the intermittent springs at the headwaters that then become larger as they, they flow down towards the lake, or wetlands. And if they were defined as a wetland, so there wasn't a sort of clear bed and bank associated with the spring, but it was more of wet soil and vegetated condition, then it would be likely defined as a slope wetland and regulated as such. And they frequently probably also would be occurring within a geologically hazardous area as well. So there's likely multiple overlapping standards in those sorts of spots. So at a broad level, the critical areas ordinance in the city protects these types, these big five types of critical areas by doing a few different things. There's prohibitions, limitations on what sorts of activities can occur in different types of critical areas. So for example, a development proposing to occur within a landslide hazard area, generally that would be, most types of development would be prohibited in that sort of environment. Adjacent to a landslide hazard area, there'd be an evaluation that would be required to ensure that whatever the development is, it was being appropriately set back or appropriately engineered to ensure that there, there wasn't some sort of hazard being created by that development. For wetlands, generally those prohibitions or limitations really restrict the opportunity for fill and direct impact to the wetland, or a minimum buffer area around it, except for very specific things, potentially like public, essential public facilities, access to existing platted lots, those sorts of, sort of necessary things that result in unavoidable impacts. There are certain allowances for those activities. And then, I already touched on it, but wetlands, watercourses, landslide hazard areas, and potentially erosion hazard areas all require some level of buffering and setback depending on kind of the, the characteristics of that feature. And there's, the code generally establishes a standard... And there's, the code generally establishes a standard buffer width, that is sort of the default. And then some allowances for reducing that buffer width is when certain measures are taken to potentially enhance the resource or specific study is done to ensure that the reduced buffer or reduced setback isn't going to cause undue harm to what the feature is and its function within the environment. And then this idea of mitigation sequencing, I think is important to sort of understand and is established by the state and it's adopted by federal government in their protection of waters of the US, which include wetlands. Sort of the approach where any development proposal that comes in, you need to start off at the start of this list. So the first thought is avoiding impacts to a wetland or avoiding impacts to a water course. And then you sequentially move your way through to, you know, for unavoidable impacts, where avoidance is impossible, minimizing, reducing those impacts to the greatest extent feasible. And then thinking about how you can construct whatever the improvement is to also minimize those impacts. Things that are unavoidable, you rectify them. So that's kind of temporary impacts associated with construction. Then you provide compensation. So that could be additional enhancement within the areas that remain on a property. So wetland buffer areas that remain, if the outer portion had to be reduced, you could plant with native vegetation to compensate for that impact on the outer portion. And then finally, monitoring is the last requirement. And like your critical area standards have expectations where if a development proposal has some impact to a water course or a wetland or down in shoreline jurisdiction, some impact to that sort of required riparian shoreline vegetation zone, then there is not just the action that occurs at the time of development, but a responsibility for that developer or property owner to come in and at year one, at year two, and potentially up to year five, or some projects maybe even up to year 10, ensure that the mitigation that was provided as compensation is being successful. So the plants that were put in are established, if a wetland was created, that the hydrology is being maintained to that wetland, so the area is still wet and it's still providing those ecological functions. So those are sort of the pieces of mitigation sequencing that you definitely will see within your wetland code and your water course code, certainly. And I think that really kind of that same approach plays into management of geologically hazardous areas as well. Yeah.
So are those conditions that you're talking about as far as avoidance or sequencing, is that something that DSG works, I mean, how are those conditions identified? And is it something that DSG has the authority to do, as long as we're following the sequence? And so I'm just curious as far as how much discretion there is that the city has.
So I, maybe I should know what DSG is. That's your department, okay. Yes. So I would imagine that for a proposal coming in, there is discretion and review in terms of ensuring that the mitigation is appropriate based on sort of common practices within these different areas. So, you know.
It would have to be documented in the critical area report pretty thoroughly to show that you went through the steps.
Yep. So there's general guidelines within the regulations and then a report would get into more detail as to sort of how mitigation was using that sequencing approach for a wetland, for a water course. And Evan, Robin, the development review team would definitely, I think, have experience enough to sort of review those sorts of things themselves, but then also be able to rely on outside experts for third-party review where necessary.
Just a teeny bit, so the avoidant sequencing idea, the concept is only alluded to in our critical areas code as a reference to mitigate through the use of best available science. And again, in the interest of being clear and direct in our code as to what the standard is, I think we need to introduce this concept into the regulation. From an administrative standpoint, I think we try and do what Aaron just described. But we are bringing knowledge to the table, if you will, that if you were homeowner, looking for where did this thing come from, it would not be immediately transparent. So in my mind, this is something we probably do need to address a little bit more thoroughly with planning commission than ultimately with council.
Yeah, no, it's great.
You're probably going to get to it. You're going to define this. And I'm wondering, is this, all this mapped out on Mercer Island? Because to your point, on a homeowner, like if I'm buying a house, is it buyer beware? Or does Mercer Island have a map that would show me and I could look at it before I bought the house that half of my lot is a wetland?
So, council member, if I may, I think this is in his deck. We have varying levels of detail and we'll get to it in just a moment.
Definitely. And the last thing that we wanted to highlight is it's not just sort of the, sort of the regulatory approach, but there's stewardship and protection of the natural environment that occurs through management of your parks and elective restoration efforts that the city takes on. And I think it's important to acknowledge those in terms of how they're raising the baseline of sort of the existing condition and addressing some of those past alterations or impacts that were done at a time when maybe folks weren't as aware of the degradation or implications of changes that were being made. So, you know, an example of that is when I was doing a little homework and putting together this deck, that well and that I was mentioning in, at the very north end of the city in Luther Burbank Park, there was a buffer enhancement project that occurred. And it was a restoration effort that was led by the city but worked with a variety of nonprofits and environmental interests to implement a few years back. So I think we kind of want to spend a bit of time going through each of these step by step. And I think this is when we're going to start to have some of that inventory and mapping information that's going to answer the question that was just raised. So geologically hazardous areas, as currently adopted in the code, include erosion hazard areas, landslide hazard areas, and seismic hazard areas. So geologically hazardous areas, sort of as a definition as a whole, are areas susceptible to erosion, sliding, earthquake, or other geological events based on a combination of their slope, soils, geological, geologic material, hydrology, vegetation, past alterations. And then it defines that it includes these three things. And there's definitions provided for each of these three subcategories as well. For developments occurring within geo-hazard areas, generally, a geotechnical report is required. Sort of it's an engineering evaluation to ensure that what's proposed is being appropriately designed consistent with building code standards for things like seismic hazard areas to withstand potential earthquakes and the liquefaction that is more prevalent within a seismic hazard area. Or that the sort of footings and foundations that are being put in adjacent to a landslide hazard area or an erosion hazard area are minimizing risk for that structure or to other properties, down gradient, or sort of any other sort of relationship from where that property is located. So this critical area is really focused, the standards are really focused on minimizing risk to human health, safety, and other critical areas. So I think that line about other critical areas really comes from the potential that erosion hazard areas can have if they're disturbed to result in sedimentation to streams, to water courses, and potentially to wetlands. So if there's vegetation clearing that occurs in an inappropriate way within an erosion hazard area, as this sort of next season storm events come, you'll see slumps, failures within the soils there that then has consequences for someone downstream, whether it's a property owner, whether it's city infrastructure like a roadway that has a culvert that was designed at a certain size and all of a sudden it might get full of sediment. You get a big storm, it backs up. So there are definitely serious implications both for a property itself and for adjacent resources and infrastructure. And then seasonal limitations can also be applied for these resources to ensure that when the construction's occurring, it's when there's less risk for erosion or other events to occur. So taking advantage of the summer dry months within erosion hazard areas. I think from some of my recent experience, a lot of geologists that I've talked to have come to sort of a place where they think a lot of the concerns about erosion hazard areas are really being covered by stormwater management approaches that have evolved and are now required throughout Western Washington. So it's adoption of one of the more recent manuals. And I'm guessing, do you guys adopt the King County's Surface Water Man, Department of Ecology Surface Water Manual that both for, on the construction side and for sort of ongoing use of some development, it ensures that the intent is to ensure that any potential for erosion and surface water runoff impacts to downstream resources or to water quality within those downstream resources are minimized. So I think that's kind of important to recognize how these protections really go hand in hand with your stormwater, surface water management standards. And this is an area where the city actually has extremely good inventory mapping, I would say. The mapping dates back, I believe, to 2009. It was developed by Kathy Truce, who's a geologist with the University of Washington that's been incredibly active in updating geologically hazardous areas maps for jurisdictions really around, sort of, all around Western Washington, but she's been very active around Lake Washington and throughout King County and Snohomish County. So you see, these maps are available on your website and there's a lot of information presented on them, so much so that it becomes a little bit tricky to kind of dial into what the erosion hazard area is. But generally, it's sort of that area that's kind of the slightly rusty color around the edges of the island, generally associated with steeper slopes. Getting into sort of the specific definition, it's any area where there's slopes greater than 15% that are subject to erosion, severe erosion risk due to a variety of conditions. And those are primarily have to do with the underlying soils within the zones and what the sort of the makeup of those soils are. And a lot of the sort of supplemental data is highlighting where those specific soil types in terms of infiltration potential and the class of the slope. So how steep it is are located within these erosion hazard areas. As a whole, erosion hazard areas are mapped across 64% of parcels within the island. This is based off of a GIS query that the city staffed in ahead of this presentation. So it's, you know, very extensive as the majority of properties are affected across the island. And it takes up a total of 45% of the island by area. Question?
I'm just trying to understand, I guess, you're, it feels giving kind of the answer before the process has occurred, in a sense. I mean, I guess, I thought part of what we were going to be doing through this process is defining what constitutes critical areas. You're giving a definition. Is that the definition we will be obliged to accept based on best available science? And therefore, there really isn't a question for us to address around that? I mean, help me understand what we will be asked, the planning commission and the council, to actually construct.
Definitely. Yeah. So, you know, I think that's a really good comment. And all of these standards, you're definitely, you're not starting from scratch. There is an established body of regulations within chapter, was it 19.07? The environmental chapter within the code that defines all of these things. And we're sort of presenting on them this evening and there's been extensive mapping that's been done. I think the real purpose of this is to hone in on the spots where there has been new best available science that suggests sort of a larger update to the protection approach is necessary. So where the current definitions, like of how these areas are designated, aren't consistent with current science. And also whether or not, based on all of your perspectives, considering best available science and community objectives, if the level of protection is high enough to sort of ensure that there's sort of a minimization of future risk.
So the definition you're giving us right now is the definition that's within our code already? Or is it a definition that you consider one that we'll likely adopt?
Yeah. So this presentation is focused on what's in the code currently. Generally, I would say for geologically hazardous areas, your definitions, because they're based off of this mapping that was done by Kathy Truce, I don't think that there's going to be much in the way of changes to them to be consistent with best available science. So for geologically hazardous areas, more of the changes might be sort of considering updates to the protection approach to ensure that, you know, the standards and criteria as far as expectations for a geotechnical report, the minimum expectations for a standard setback from a landslide hazard area, those sorts of considerations are kind of appropriate to minimize risk associated with these features. And as I go through, I can, we'll definitely try to touch on at least a little bit, a preview of sort of how much change there might be coming on each of these critical areas types.
This might be out of sequence, but as a community, as a city or community, how much latitude do we have in terms of defining the stringency of the new regulations we're going to be adopting? So which has higher, which has a higher obligation? Like state regulation, Growth Management Act, our comp plan? You know, because, because when, I know that we're going to get to this, but when you look at our, kind of our scoring sheet, property ownership comes in number one. And then down at the bottom is, you know, you know what I'm trying to get at?
For sure.
So.
It's through that balance of the competing, sometimes competing objectives.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I think Evan, he's itching to answer this question, so I'll let him get going and I can add.
So there are a couple of parts to the answer to that question. We haven't gotten to the decision-making tool discussion yet. I do not think that tool is intended to rank the priority of the various policy factors, if you will, decision-making factors, in that manner. I think they are relevant inputs for us to talk about. So how much do we want to give discretion to someone who owns a house next to a water course in terms of complying with a very prescriptive buffer versus providing more flexibility? And there are probably pros and cons in terms of environmental impacts and property ownership. The state requires that the, at a minimum, the city consider best available science and that best available science informs this process. On the, what I'll characterize broadly as the geo-hazard areas, the geologically hazardous areas, I don't think there is much discussion around the definition, but the amount of protection that's warranted, you do have some discretion around. On something like wildlife habitat conservation areas, we currently protect bald eagle habitat. We could identify other species of local concern. We've talked about this a little bit with the planning commission. Some cities talk about pollinator habitat, so butterflies, bees, things of that nature. Some cities consider birds. That's an area where I think the city council and the planning commission have some discretion, both on the definition question, what are we protecting? And then the degree of protection question. The decision-making tool is intended to help you kind of get the holistic picture of what is this change going to mean on the big policy items? And we will dig into it further. Did I catch the right test for best available science at least?
Yes. Yeah, I think it is, best available science is required as one consideration. Yes, yeah, I think it is, best available science is required as one consideration. So there has to be documentation that the city considered evaluated best available science in establishing these standards. And we have a slide that kind of gets into that towards the end of the presentation. I think that generally, that best available science has been turned into guidelines for some of these critical areas established by the state that really are seen as best practices that are necessary to minimize future harm or risk to critical areas or as a result of development around critical areas. So I think there is, I think there's a lot of good reason to heed best available science, but where there's sort of specific patterns based on like the historical development occurring with the city, or if there's specific objectives in terms of where the city wants to see some sort of additional growth or some sort of allowance for improvements to homes, then there, that's where you can kind of get into some of those flexibilities. So.
Evan, Erin, I think I'm starting to sense, you know, some interest in getting a little bit deeper into some of the material and the questions that we have tonight. Can you help us understand how much more is left in the presentation and then where we're going after that?
Yeah, so I think they're actually, we're on the first type of critical area. I definitely could crank it up a little bit, but I think for each of them, there is maybe, you know, if people have questions regarding specific critical areas, definitely interrupt and slow me down along the way. And then following this presentation, kind of setting that foundation. Hold on, Evan.
Yeah, I'm assuming we probably need somewhere between half hour and 45 minutes to both get through the discussion around the decision-making tool and just a very brief presentation for me, trying to describe what's going on, if you will, to follow on. So the idea tonight, just to zoom way out for a moment, was to try and give everybody an equal sense of what is, what is it we're talking about? What are critical areas? What is the regulatory context? And then make sure that there's a shared understanding between the Council and the Planning Commission on what are the relevant factors the Planning Commission should look at in forming a recommendation to the Council. So that, that's kind of the high-level overview of where we're going. I want to give Erin a chance just to finish the quick description, and then I'll pop up.
Perfect, yeah, and definitely I will, as I'm sort of gauging how responsive and how many questions there are, and I think, you know, I don't know everyone's familiarity in the room, so I'll definitely move a little quicker, and people definitely slow me down if you have questions along the way. So there is this sort of detailed level of inventory mapping for each of those three core types of geologically hazardous areas. So even more data in terms of supplemental data that's being shown on this one for landslide hazards. The landslide hazard area's definition includes a lot of different criteria in terms of past, areas of past known landslides where they've occurred. So that's some of the supplemental data you're seeing, but again, it's very extensive across the island where you're seeing 66% of parcels and 51% of the island by area are shown as being within an inventory landslide hazard area. So I think maybe taking this to how that, what that means for the property owner that has a property that's one of those 61% or 66%, that would mean that the city, if they came in with some sort of proposal for a new home or an addition, that the city would require a geotechnical review to consider the proximity of the landslide hazard area and ensure consistent with the standards that are adopted by the code.
What does the brown represent off the shoreline? Is it white in some areas and brown in others?
Yeah, so that's, that is a good question, and I know that there's going to be a time when the Planning Commission and City Council dials into geologically hazardous areas in more detail with the support of Aspect Consulting. I'm looking at the supplemental data, and I'm guessing it could have to do with sort of the bathymetry, so the underwater topo that continues, and how that that sort of layer was clipped. So it's picking up where there's those really steep slopes that continue down into the aquatic environment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's an underground forest on the south end of the island?
Mm-hmm.
And if you scuba dive and you go down, you can see it, and I'm just wondering, does that mean that there, an earthquake put part of Mercer Island under, and it's defined as a sensitive zone in this map? But you can get back to me
Yeah.
Later on what that means.
Yeah, I doubt, yeah, it's either, so it's going to be either having to do with the soils, the topography, or combination of the both that extends underwater, and why it's sort of mapped as a landslide hazard area with respect to sort of management of critical areas. It's kind of, that seems tenuous, but we definitely could
Just get back to me.
Talk with Dave McCormick and get back to you on that. Yep. And then the next map is showing the seismic hazard areas, so these are soils that are at greater risk of sort of movement during an earthquake event, either due to slopes or some, you're seeing some of sort of those central plateau areas, and I'm guessing that those are deposits of soils that are more prone to liquefaction. So that the criteria that come in here are primarily ensuring that the building code standards are there in place to minimize the risk for any future development within those seismic hazard areas. Again, very extensive across the island with the inventory mapping that's available. So water courses are what you probably commonly think of as streams, and I'm going to hand this portion off and the next couple topics to Jessica.
Yep, so I will start with water courses or streams. These are usually defined in the field and generally by the code as having defined unvegetated bed and banks. The code further says that their definition or your definition does not include irrigation and drainage ditches, grass line swales, canals, stormwater runoff devices, or other courses unless they're used by fish. All water courses in the city are designated to be type 1, 2, 3, or pipe, piped. Type 1 is used by fish. These are sort of your wider, lower elevation, low gradient streams. Type 2, flow year-round, permanent flow, not used by fish. Often those steeper, more narrow, permanent flowing streams. And type 3, similar to type 2, but not used by fish and piped, kind of self-explanatory. So the buffers are assigned to each type based on their ecological function, with type 1 having the highest ecological function because they are used by fish. So here's just the current buffers for the code. Type 1, standard 75, minimum 37. You don't need to read all that, but, so the minimum buffer is the absolute minimum the buffer can be with enhancement. Generally, there's no development allowed in the buffer, but currently there are two flexibilities that exist in the code. So the buffer can vary away from the standard buffer, and that includes buffer reduction and buffer averaging. Buffer reduction is approved on a case-by-case basis, and the buffer cannot be reduced below the minimum, excuse me, minimum buffer. And the code offers about 10 types of mitigation that the applicant can use alone or in a combination. Some common ones include removal of impervious surface, removal of noxious weeds, habitat enhancements such as installing logs, other habitat features, installing previous material for driveway construction, and daylighting coverted streams or water courses. The second, and I think kind of more common, flexibility is buffer averaging. So there's a few requirements that need to be met for buffer averaging approval, and that's also on a case-by-case basis. It must result in a net improvement in critical area function. The buffer needs to be enhanced with native vegetation. The total area of the buffer cannot be reduced by the proposal. The average buffer is not reduced beyond the minimum buffer width at any part of the buffer, and the area of the buffer reduction does not contain a steep slope.
So just to, like averaging, I think the criteria there kind of explain it, but it's sort of, you can have variation in what the width is on different portions of the property to allow for a development site or for a driveway, so a spot where the buffer gets narrower, but then somewhere else on the property, you're adding more buffer to compensate for the reduction. So there's a no-net loss in total buffer square footage across the property.
And critical area reports need to be done for any of these proposals, kind of going through that mitigation sequencing and showing how there will be a no-net loss of function.
Is there any guidance as to when you can pipe things? I mean, supposing you regarded piping as an enhancement? Is that possible?
So there's pretty narrow allowances for piping, and to consider piping enhancement, if you like, were to talk to a Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife biologist or anyone at that state agency or at the Department of Ecology, they would pretty quickly frown upon piping because you're losing open habitat, the associated riparian function that's there with it. The allowances for piping, I think, are primarily for like roadways, property access where it's unavoidable. So those sorts of limited circumstances where some sort of linear improvement requires a crossing of the stream in order to get people to where the development is occurring.
Is the buffer from the centerline or from the outer edge?
From the ordinary high watermark of each side of the pipe, I believe it's the centerline, though.
So, so ordinary high watermark is Ordinary high watermark is based on vegetation, then, if you've got a seasonal stream, for instance, or?
It's based on a series of things. It could be vegetation, it could be sediment deposition, but yes, usually vegetation.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned in your short presentation that it was like 10 enhancements. I'm not sure if that was the right number, but are the enhancements that are in our code now, are they common in other codes? Or are there enhancements that we don't have in our code, just as a general matter?
I would say a little of both. There's not many codes that actually list as many mitigation options that are called in the code. I think, for instance, installation of previous material for driveway construction. I know recently there's been a lot of controversy about previous material and its maintenance. I think maybe less is a little bit more in this instance, where just saying mitigation and then having the city see what the pros and cons or what the actual lift post-mitigation would be could be helpful. So there is currently some water course mapping that the city has. It's approximately 39 miles, there it is, 39 miles across the city, crossing or affecting 13% of the parcels. This water course mapping was based on a survey from, by, excuse me, from 2002, and it's pretty rough. I know just in our, in our third-party reviews, we've come a lot, we've come across a few areas that were mapped as, you know, seasonal streams and haven't, don't exist. So this is, I think, a place for improvement down the road.
And I think, you know, it, having this, you know, sort of with the right caveats, it still can be a helpful tool for the city. So, you know, the development proposal comes in, but the, the actual applicant for that property is required on a case-by-case basis to consider what the actual conditions are on their property and document them. So if there's not a stream there, they would say, this is not a stream, it's actually stormwater runoff that's in a pipe, or there's nothing. So I think if you're seeing it as a tool, but I think it does sort of present a level of specificity, specificity, that sometimes causes some headaches, where, you know, the city's, is led to believe, the city, project review staff has led to believe that something's a stream where in fact it's not.
So, may I offer just a little bit of color commentary real quick? The council member actor, I think, asked a few minutes ago, kind of what degree these critical areas affect the island. This is the best information we have at the moment that gives you a sense of degree. I would echo a little bit the comments by Jessica and Erin. The challenge with the water course layer and the wetland layer is frankly the accuracy, even with information we know based on current project reviews. Our water course layer, I don't think always represents areas where we've co-mingled drainage coming off of a neighborhood, if you will, and actually historic flows into the same pipe, and then it expresses out on the hillside, and it becomes kind of a combination of drainage and, and water course. So there is some, some further refinement we need to do in this layer, and I'll foreshadow a little bit. The wetland layer needs even more love and care as we move forward, just in terms of the accuracy, even in my two years of experience here with the city at this point, is not what we would hope for.
I was just curious about, when I heard fish, it looks like, I'm looking for orange up here, there's a little bit here, but there's also a few places like here where the very end of it has some orange, and here where the very end of it has some orange. So I presume that means that there is some potential for fish kind of going a little bit upstream there, but these are fish coming from the lake, not coming from the island, I presume, right?
Yes, so it's sort of the habitat that would be associated primarily, I think, from a sort of habitat important standpoint with outmigrating juvenile salmon. So as they're making their way from the Cedar River or from other larger tributaries on their way out to the Puget Sound, they're hugging the Mercer Island shoreline and the outer shorelines of Lake Washington and looking for refuge, I think is kind of the common terminology, where they can go and snack on insects and other little critters and avoid some of the predators that are in this kind of deeper water and more open water within the lake. So I think that's, those very bottom ends of some of the drainages are where that channel provides that sort of refuge habitat.
Yeah, it looks like, just from an initial glance, that there's only one stream that's more than just like 20 feet away from the water. I wonder whether they actually spawn upstream there, or whether they just have been seen swimming there.
Yeah.
I presume that that launches into a different set of regulations when you actually have spawning going on in the stream.
Yeah, I mean, definitely from, it'd be a larger reach of the stream where you'd have that higher level of standard, and then, you know, really, from WDFW's perspective and from the city perspective, the differentiation's going to be on kind of what you were seeing on the standard buffer width table. So the type 1 streams that do have fish use, wider buffers applied, so it's a higher level of protection due to that.
That mapping may just be based off of topography, too, in the stream itself.
So, so what about inadvertent? What about inadvertent development? So years ago, I did a project in King County, and it was on the Bear Creek watershed. And between the time that we designed the project and the time we went in for permitting, beavers came in and built a dam, and it became a wetland. And so we had to move the house like 100 feet up the hill. So if something like that happens, is there room to kind of like say, well, the beavers built this dam, it's not in a park, you know? I mean, what kind of, again, getting back to latitude, what kind of movement ability is there?
Yeah, they definitely, I mean, these are dynamic environments, and there's changes that occur. Like you could see potentially a situation where wetland hydrology changes due to upstream development. That's an example that you might see more commonly. So what was once maybe pretty dry, all of a sudden is a bit wetter and meets wetland criteria, and that's kind of a common, more common circumstance that you hear within sort of urban areas. But I think the Beaver Dam example is useful, too, although with these small drainages, might not, might not be as prevalent as on Bear Creek. I would, you know, I think that there is some leniency built into the code, like if you saw on the table where the minimum buffer width required for a restored stream channel was fairly narrow, that was sort of approaches there to encourage that was sort of approaches there to encourage people to restore channels and taking them and daylighting them where there's opportunity to do that without all of a sudden creating a seventy-five foot wide buffer on their property. But I think as far as management of these resources, there's expectation for evaluation by qualified professionals that occurs at the time of the development. Uh, and sort of what they're seeing on the ground is then reviewed by city staff and the standards on the book are applied accordingly. So the, you know, generally like the state and the Corps of Engineers have what? A five-year, uh, clock on a delineation or is it only three years? Five years, so a wetland delineation, for example, is only good for five years because they, they realize that over that period of time, there could be changes that occur. And I don't know if the city has sort of an established policy on how long critical area studies are good for. No, uh, but sort of that, generally there's some state agency that might be coming into play that sort of requires a reevaluation, but those sorts of circumstances do occur.
Um, you may have said this, I was walking back in and a subject caught my ears. And yes or no is fine on this answer. Do we have spawning salmon streams on Mercer Island?
I don't know if there is documentation of a spawning salmon stream.
Yeah, not, not that we know of. Okay, the second question is, I thought I heard you say the salmon don't like open water and they, they hug the shoreline then, but then that would mean they have to cross a large body of open water to get to Mercer Island to hug the shoreline before they go through the open water again. So I'm, what you're inferring is that we have to protect salmon on Mercer Island, but it, it didn't make sense to me the way that you described it because they'd have to put themselves at great risk to get to Mercer Island to hug the shoreline.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, that's a good question and I can follow up with, uh, the fisheries biologist that's on our team to see if there's science that shows that there's a lot more juvenile salmon outmigration along the outer shores of the lake.
If somebody could just answer the risk there, what we're looking at, that would be great. And then thirdly, I think Senator Clark had created his own bass spawning area on his property. If a homeowner chooses to do that, then it's permanently in one of these critical area protected zones, incorrect? Like if somebody wanted to create a salmon spawning stream and they have a large piece of property, and we have a few people that have large pieces of waterfront property. They, they could. Then it would then be permanently covered under these ordinances, correct?
Yeah, I think as long as there was some sort of fish population within, within the stream. And I, I guess I should also reiterate that, 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 that typing of fish, I don't think the current code specifically calls out that it has to be a salmon-bearing stream, so. Yeah, so others, yeah, so other freshwater types of fish, um, like sicklebacks, sculpin, those sorts of things that commonly occur in smaller streams. If they're there, that could be considered a, a type one stream as well. But yes, if someone was doing something where they were adding fish or, you know, rearing fish for a stream on their property, then, yeah.
Or they were, or they were environmentally sensitive and wanted to contribute to the broader ecosystem. And, and there are people who do that.
Definitely, yes, yeah.
Evan, I, I just wanted to quickly ask, has anybody gotten a copy of the YRAT Chinook Recovery Plan, the latest draft DSA?
Have we gotten a copy of that document to ESA?
Yeah, I, I asked because he, he said he would talk to the ecologists and maybe ask about salmon crossing open water from Cedar. But, you know, the salmon recovery plan has this well documented, has all the information you would need. And we are part of YRAT. And so one of the things that I was actually going to ask later, but I'll ask it now. From a legislative policy-type directive, our agreement with them talks about trying to find incentives to restore habitat, de-armor, de-bulk head shoreline, to try and aid in that Chinook recovery salmon plan. I know that that would be within the SMP and I brought this up when we did some scoping, but I don't think it was well understood what I was asking, that it was just to take the guidance of the agreement we already have signed on to as a council and see if there was opportunity to incorporate any of that into maybe this program while we're doing. So I would just say, Jason, Jason, if Pete and Public Works has a copy of it?
Yeah, no, and we certainly have access as well, Deputy Mayor. And pardon me if I did not understand your question correctly a few months ago. The, uh, critical areas ordinance could certainly address some of these, these thoughts that I'm hearing council members at least allude to. I, I guess I want to be direct about something that we're kind of dancing around the edge a little bit. A lot of these concepts are not currently present in our critical areas code. Uh, we, we allude to them, but we, we are not articulating them directly. For example, if someone wanted to, uh, create a hatchery on the island, we may want to, as a community, encourage that. We may also want to grant some flexibility around the buffers we would apply to that kind of stream course so it doesn't create a negative effect for property owners on the site or adjacent. And that would be a perfectly rational thing to maybe build into our regulations that's not present currently at all. So I, feedback of that sort, areas where you are interested in learning or, or seeing us exploit this a little bit further, is one of the things I'm hoping for. Both out of tonight, I've been trying to take notes as people speak. And, uh, as part of our follow-up conversations, either with the planning commission or with the council as we move forward. I do think there's two observations to offer. One, we are probably starting to talk about a, a chapter rewrite, if you will, rather than a modification of the existing code. And we have that capacity built in to this exercise if that's where the planning commission and council want to go. The second would be, um, I would offer a little bit of a caution that we can make a very complicated set of regulations if we're not careful. And I, again, I'm, I'm here to try and facilitate the, the council and the planning commission's intent. But I think some of these are.
Seeing WDFW no longer develops or reviews bald eagle plans for development, they no longer map nests on their priority habitat and species website, and they no longer, um, take reports of sightings. Um, bald eagles are still protected under the Migratory Bird Act and the Eagle Act. Um, so there is some guidance that US Fish and Wildlife came out with in two thousand and seven that WDFW recommends local jurisdictions put in their code. So that might be, um, a good addition. Um, there's also the possibility of, before we move off of eagles, um, this is the current mapping of eagle nests and the parcels at the various buffers. There's a three hundred and thirty-foot buffer and a six hundred and sixty-foot buffer. Um, the smaller buffer is if the development activity is out of sight of the nest, um, say by a vegetation wall. Um, and that, I think that three thirty and six sixty is pretty in line with the, with the federal regulations. This is also another opportunity in the code revisions to maybe consider other habitats or other species. We've heard that there may have, um, be some additions, Evan, you mentioned.
I think I mentioned the pollinator habitat a little earlier this evening, um, which is just one I'm, I'm familiar with another jurisdiction talking about. And I think, uh, there's potentially been some discussion around, uh, one of the, the mammal species on the island and I've lost track of which one at the moment. I think that's one we'll, we'll. Salamanders and Douglas squirrels, that's right. I, hey, this is only a very preliminary conversation with the planning commission, so please don't run with those two species at the moment. But, you know, if we decided as a community that we wanted to protect some species, be it bird, mammal, or amphibian, uh, we would want to identify that as a local species of interest?
Concerned.
Concerned, pardon me, uh, in our comprehensive plan and then adopt protections accordingly. Again, this is one of the optional areas that we can talk about further and, and probably does not need to be resolved tonight.
Um, so moving on to wetlands. Um, there's four main types of wetlands on the island and, and in, um, the area in general. Lake fringe, riverine, depressional, and slope wetlands. Um, wetland delineations are based on, uh, United States Army Corps of Engineer guidance regarding the presence of hydrophytic vegetation, hydro soil indicators, and wetland hydrology. Um, wetlands are important because they provide hydrologic functions, water quality improvement, and habitat functions. Um, based on category three, again, drops slightly, um, diverse and more isolated from other natural resources. Excuse me, often less diverse or more isolated. Category four, um, are usually, have lowest level of functions and are usually heavily disturbed. Um, the city, um, assigns buffers to these wetlands based on that functional hierarchy and they are currently thirty-five to a hundred. Um, thirty-five category four. They also have, um, minimum buffer widths assigned to them with category one having a minimum buffer width of fifty feet. Uh, category two, thirty-seven, category three, twenty-five, and category four, twenty-five. Um, the code provides the same flexibilities as streams with these buffer widths as far as buffer reduction and buffer averaging with the same mitigation options that I spoke of earlier. Actually, the current code says, has most of the text in the stream section and in the wetland section just refers back to the stream section. So I think a little bit, um, maybe is improving the code a little bit to, um, show the difference protection or protect, needed protection between a stream and a wetland could help.
I, just to quickly highlight, this is a spot where, uh, there is going to be, you know, resulting from ecology's updated guidance, so the new wetland rating system or the updated wetland rating system and additional guidance for protection of wetlands that, um, definitely suggests that wider buffers are necessary for protection of best available science. Uh, that there could be some implications for, um, so, of fairly substantial changes to what you have adopted currently. Um, so the, the implications for how much buffer width will go up kind of ranges, uh, within the nuances of that code, but there's sort of the hundred-foot wide buffer, you know, for the higher category, higher value category three and the limited instances of category two wetlands is probably going to jump to more like a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Yeah, the new, um, the new best available science relies a lot on what the habitat function is of the wetland. So, um, a category three with a high habitat function will have a much higher buffer than a category three with a low habitat function.
So that's just a, a preview of that this is an area where there is some likely changes, at least as suggested by best available science, um, that will be presented to the planning commission in the months ahead.
Uh, can I ask, what is Ellis Pond? Is it a one, two, three? Four, doubt is a four. Because your definition of number one said, I think, half acre or greater high ecological function.
So that was for a bog specifically of a half acre or greater?
Oh, you haven't been there then?
Yeah, well, so I, yeah, I'd say, I guess you, we would have to look at the resource specifically.
Anyway, just a question, that was curious. Uh, maybe since you talked about larger buffer areas, especially a hundred and sixty feet, can you maybe, Evan, talk about non-conformance and what the concern is here? You know, obviously, we're going to have a lot more of it, non-conforming, um, structures that would just fall in a buffer that are already built, I'd imagine. Um, and then lastly, are any LiDAR studies from King County, any LiDAR-type resources being used in trying to true up these maps that have you found to be a little inconsistent?
So I'll start with the last so I don't totally lose track. The LiDAR mapping is something we're looking at, uh, for a variety of purposes, not just for the, the wetland and water course discussion. Uh, part of that mapping really, we need to get past this first definitional question, really for both water courses and wetlands. Make sure that we're consistent with the state guidance before we go out and, and update our maps. We're also starting to look at our, uh, critical area reviews that we've been engaging in over the last two or three, even further back years, to make sure that our wetland layer in our GIS is updated with that historic information, that review information. The non-conforming question, I think that is an area where we may want to look at both what our current non-conforming code generally says, so nineteen dot oh one, which is kind of our broad, uh, regulations. And then maybe think about building in some specific regulations for critical areas for this kind of situation. One of the, the conversations I foreshadowed a little bit for the planning commission is we may see wetland and water course buffers increase, maybe going from a hundred to a hundred and sixty-five, I think I heard a moment ago. We also have had periodically conversations around aging in place and wanting to allow some flexibility for people to renovate their home, to allow for that kind of activity. We don't have a lot of language in our current code that it speaks to that kind of trade-off. Do we allow for a, what I'd characterize as a de minimis addition to your kitchen, uh, in return for some flexibility around buffer widths and mitigation? I think that is a theme I've heard a lot on this island in the last two years about. And so I do think it's one of those areas we just need to work through a little bit more thoroughly as part of this critical area update and use the scientific information to inform that exercise. And to be clear, I'm not talking about a full teardown replacement. I'm really talking about like the kitchen addition or expanding the footprint of an existing house to some extent. And then to your last question, the rating on Ellis Pond, I don't know that we know uh, without going through the, the rating exercise itself on any specific wetland. It has an open water component, I believe it's over a quarter acre, just having walked around it. I get tired easily. But the actual rating itself. Yeah, well, it's, it's office life, right? So, you know, I, I don't know that I could actually answer that question on, on any of the wetlands we're most aware of. I don't know if we've gotten to it in the deck yet. Uh, I believe our current GIS mapping reflects something like fifteen wetlands on the island. I believe that's inaccurate because even since I've arrived to the, with the city in the last, ah, here we have it on the screen. In the last two years, I think we've done seven or eight different critical area reviews for wetlands on sites that were not mapped. And when I say we're starting to get that into our GIS layer, that's what I'm alluding to. Those critical area reviews need to inform our GIS. And then we should be thinking about things like, in my opinion, LiDAR and what else we can pick up as far as the mapping goes.
If I could, I'm, um, we, I know that we've done at least two LiDAR, um, mappings of the island. Is it a matter then of just taking that mapping and, and extracting a different, uh, data? I don't know, interpretation from it? Or is it actually a matter of running the, the flights again because you have to do a different? And forgive me, I'm probably way down in the weeds on this question, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a direct answer for you at the moment. I believe there is analysis that's required of the LiDAR data to actually answer the question of do we see reflectivity that would be associated with a wetland? Time of year does matter, of course, leaf on versus leaf off. Uh, and it's not really a subject yet, I've broached with our GIS department. Again, the, the basic approach around the mapping has been with our geo-hazards, we have very accurate data because we've been maintaining a very thorough, uh, database of our critical area reports, our geotechnical reports that we've been requiring on new homes. Wetlands and water courses appear to have been a little bit less well-maintained, if you will. Before going through the big effort of, of updating an inventory, we wanted to make sure that we had our definitions nailed down, at least for the foreseeable.
Evan, I think your answer about LiDAR mapping and using it to, doing remote sensing of where wetlands are in the landscape is, is really good. I will say that from the papers and the science I've read, it's really challenging to especially identify these smaller wetlands that are potentially in someone's backyard, like slope wetlands or other just small features uh, that are primarily going to be underneath a canopy cover and there's not much of that hydrologic signature in terms of, um, reflection or a really distinct change in the vegetation cover, um, that you can pick up from LiDAR or any sort of other remote interpretation. Uh, so in a place like Mercer Island, that remote sensing approach could be challenging, I think, to, uh, really get a fine resolution, understanding of where wetlands are in the landscape.
I just put up the last slide that shows what is mapped, um, by the city. So it's a total of five point eight acres located on twenty-two total parcels or less than point five percent of the. than point five percent of the parcels in the city. So just to reiterate, it could use some beefing up.
What's the acreage of this island? What's the acreage of the island?
It's something like four thousand, between four thousand and five thousand acres. Yeah.
No, I understand. It's just severely under mapped. It could be ten acres, it could be a hundred acres.
Does the five point eight tot- total acres, does that include wetlands in parks?
Yes, it would, yep. And actually, the, you know, between Ellis Pond that was identified, that Jessica and I were peeking out on our smartphone, looking at aerials from above, and, you know, the well and up on the north end, I think the wetlands that are in parks could be a significant portion of that five point eight total acres, so, yeah. Yep. Yes. And I don't think, you know, it's definitely not the sort of coverage that's anywhere approaching the geo hazard coverage that we were highlighting earlier, but certainly, I think severely under mapped is probably a pretty accurate characterization of the current inventory.
So we have a lot of seeps on the island?
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes those get uncovered during construction? Does that then kick you into a critical areas kind of?
So I think that's one of those spots where you would hope that some of those overlapping coverages between geologically hazardous areas and so the landslide hazard areas and erosion hazard areas are going to be minimizing the sorts of development that's going to be occurring on those steeper slopes where groundwater is interfacing with the surface and you get those seeps. Where they're seen in the environment, that's definitely, they're rated as wetlands and there's a required buffer around them. I think you're probably thinking about like large-scale grading type activities that all of a sudden they cut into that shallow groundwater lens and all of a sudden it's hitting the surface. I think a geotech, a geotech would probably try to say that that those those kind of conditions are identified as part of their geotechnical investigations or the borings that are done as part of design for a project, but sometimes those situations occur, but I don't think they would really, if they were unearthed with a massive excavation, it wouldn't be a wetland.
Not every seep is just automatically a wetland, it still has to meet the hydrophytic vegetation criteria and soils.
Yep. So it might create more of like a drainage, stormwater management kind of issue than creating a new wetland necessarily. And then the last one we wanted to touch on is actually a portion of the critical areas code where there aren't currently standards, and that's for critical aquifer recharge Within Mercer Island, these are of particular interest because there are groundwater resources that do warrant protection. So critical aquifer recharge areas are necessary to ensure protection of communities' groundwater resources, so they're mapped as areas of higher susceptibility and of infiltration and movement into those groundwater aquifers. Within Mercer Island, there's a emergency well that was established in two thousand and ten at Rotary Park that was put in place for a big natural disaster type event that cut off your water supply that's coming across a bridge, and all of a sudden, there was a need to have this emergency supply of potable drinking water available to all of your residents. And then there's also a handful of private residential wells that remain on the city from a much earlier time and pattern of development. So Robin queried with the the building department, and I think that there's there's ten utility bill payers with private wells. How many homes that support those wells are supporting is a little bit unclear because some of them could be sort of a small community well that's supporting anywhere from probably one to or two to eight homes, I think is typically kind of the threshold size for what can be kind of like a single well that's a small community well as far as the state is concerned. But they do occur, they are supplying drinking water, and there are areas within the city where those infiltrative soils do occur. It's primarily, I think, actually the central portion of the island. So project priorities for this effort are establishing the the critical aquifer recharge area map, or CARA, is the acronym for those. So Aspect Consulting will be looking at where the wellheads are specifically and looking at the the characteristics of the soils, and will be establishing a high-resolution map of kind of the the wellhead protection zones that aren't just concentric circles, but also factor in the soils surrounding those wells and how water is moving through those soils. So it'll provide a fairly high resolution of information as to what areas the city really needs to pay attention to in terms of ensuring protection of aquifer recharge areas. As far as implications for future development, your typical residential use, they're probably pretty limited. There's, these are more focused on facilities like gas stations where there's potential for contamination if there was a leak that was going to occur. Also, any sort of project that's looking to infiltrate stormwater, there could be some additional criteria placed there to ensure that a level of treatment, water quality treatments being provided before that water is infiltrated into the into the soil. So stormwater from roadways and other pollution generating impervious surfaces. So the implications, I think, are going to be fairly focused and aren't going to result in new buffers, but more sort of about the the building approach and the specific measures for specific types of uses. And that finishes up our discussion of each of these big five critical areas. Just to quickly touch on kind of this idea of best available science, it is built into the Growth Management Act that developing and establishing critical areas regulations has to consider best available science. What that means is it's use of research and guidance that's conducted by qualified individuals, so technical experts within the specific fields that were that are associated with these critical areas. So for wetlands, it would be ecologists and hydrologists that have expertise in in how wetlands are occurring and their functional importance within a landscape and the sorts of impacts that occur from surrounding development. From for geo hazards, it would be geotechnical engineers and geologists, hydrogeologists, those sorts of technical experts. The research guidance needs to be based on documented methodology methodologies, so thinking back to sort of the scientific method and peer review literature with verifiable results and conclusions. I think one thing that I think is important is sort of the the underpinning of best available science needs to be sort of well-documented, well-tested approaches for management of these resources, not sort of the cutting edge of some new new science or new standard that's first being considered. And just highlighting again, we touched on this before, there in nineteen ninety-five, there was an amendment to the GMA that required consideration of best available science for protecting critical critical areas. So that kind of speaks that they that it does need to be considered, but it can be balanced with other priorities of the community as well. But I think if if you're looking at the consequences of development that departs from best available science and departs from establishing these buffers and protection criteria, you are likely resulting in a higher potential for risk to natural resources and to human safety. I think there's, you know, potentially within Mercer Island, we could look to examples and definitely examples of of other places around the Puget Sound where appropriate buffers and appropriate evaluation wasn't provided. And there's been costs to public works, costs to cities as far as the actual jurisdiction itself, and definitely harm to environmental resources and to human property and lives that have resulted from inappropriate management of of critical areas inconsistent with BAS. I think we just want to emphasize that BAS and consideration of BAS is is there for good reason. And just to quickly touch on next steps, so we are underway in gathering available best available science, both looking to the resources that were compiled as part of the previous CAO update in Mercer Island and looking at new resources, new sources since then. So that's from state agencies, ecology definitely has new BAS relevant to to wetlands, there's new water typing guidance from Department of Natural Resources, so looking at that compared to your current water, your water course typing system, new information on management of seismic hazard areas or anything around geologically hazardous areas. Considering that BAS against your existing policy and adopted comprehensive plan, policy priorities, we definitely are going to take some time looking at other jurisdictions and have been working with Evan and Robin to hone in on what jurisdictions are going to sort of present the the best kind of alternative approaches and potential ideas for doing things like allowing flexibilities for smaller scale additions to existing homes that provide some flexibility around nonconformance. So Bainbridge Island is definitely one of those that that's been identified, and we're honing in and finalizing the list to to round out that that set. And the first deliverable will be completing the BAS report, best available science report and gap analysis, review of the existing critical area standards. So that kind of, we'll get into more details with the planning commission on that, but it'll lay out sort of regulation by regulation, sort of what what we're seeing as needs for updates to ensure consistency with best available science or other need for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan or objectives for having a code that is useful in implementation and clear to property owners and to city staff alike. And then we'll be working towards planning commission review. So that is the end of the presentation that we have, so if there's any additional questions, and we definitely can keep answering questions as Evan gets into his portion.
Mayor, may I request that we take maybe a five-minute recess just to take care of necessities?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful then if you could just map out for so so council and commission have a sense of where we're going cognizant that we're two hours in.
Sure. So pardon me, Mayor, the this first part of the presentation was really, again, intended to kind of share a baseline level of knowledge and information on the critical areas update. The second part of our evening is intended to be a follow-up discussion really around the approach we will use for making recommendations at the planning commission level or perhaps decisions at the council level on some of the bigger policy questions. So high level, I would expect that we're going to see many, many, many different types of changes in our regulations with the code amendment. So I'm gonna make up a number, maybe a hundred and ten, hundred and fifty different changes. Some of those will warrant actual policy discussion, either at the planning commission or at the council. The point of the follow-up conversation here is to focus on that subset and how we would make recommendations from the planning commission to the council, so you have some sense of of what your planning commission's doing in their analysis, hopefully to improve the council's comfort with the recommendation we expect.
All right, great. I think just for easy math, let's adjourn at seven thirty. I think just for easy math, let's, uh, re-adjourn at seven thirty.
Council, staff, commissioners? We're gonna go ahead and reconvene. It is seven thirty-two. I think we still have some sugar over there if anybody needs an extra boost. Okay. So, for this, um, this next section, sort of the last section, I think is where we, we get into a little bit more group discussion. Evan, I'm gonna hand it over to you to help, uh, guide us all through.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, is this on? This is on. All right, so I've characterized this as a decision-making tool. It's probably more of a decision assistance tool. This was actually, decision-making was a term I, I brought up, and I think the planning commission has since addressed. But the main idea here tonight is to share this tool with the city council. Help everybody have a similar, shared understanding of what the intent behind this tool is. And then, to the extent that council can, or the commission can provide discussion and feedback around that tool, that's what I'm trying to get out of tonight. The, uh, the tool itself, it's an aid. It's intended for the big policy decisions, so we're not planning on using this on every policy decision. If we end up talking about something way down in the weeds, this isn't the right tool for that. The main idea behind it is that it summarizes all of the relevant factors that the planning commission and the city council will consider in making a code amendment. These are identified primarily in qualitative assessments, not quantitative assessments. So we're not talking about is the buffer one foot bigger or smaller, we're talking about matters of degree. Are we trying to protect, uh, wildlife habitat, or are we trying to just focus on, um, hydrology? The tool is intended to provide some options, so if we start to see negative effects out of one of our policy decisions, we would, uh, adjust that. And then there are a couple items on this, this decision-making aid that are intended to both illustrate gatekeeper issues or factors that we should consider, so something totally inconsistent with best available science, something that where there's, uh, salient case law versus decision-making factors, and I'll get to this in a little bit further. And for reference, the tool I'm talking about is the table that you can find in your agenda bill. It has a big draft watermark mark behind it, and I've just popped it onto the screen here. It's essentially broken into two pieces at the moment. The top piece is intended to, uh, identify these gatekeeper questions. Is the proposed amendment consistent with best available science? Is it consistent with our comprehensive plan? Is there case law that we should be considering? The second half of that, uh, document is really around these decision-making factors or decision aid tools. And there's four main categories that I think the planning commission and the city staff have put up here. Uh, property owner interests is the first one listed. These are on an equal footing, if you will. Uh, community interests, so these would be things like getting people to play outside, growth targets, things of that nature. Uh, environmental interests, so protecting critical areas for certain reasons, uh, maybe thinking about wildlife habitat conservation areas. And then the administrative, uh, factor, which is really intended to address this simplicity question, is our goal to be simple, is it intend, is the, the option clear? Are we way down into a hypothetical situation which may not actually occur on Mercer Island? So, I've already covered these. I'm happy to expand on them further, but I think we understand the high-level categories that we're addressing. And again, the question for the council and the commission is, are there other aspects, other factors that we should be considering as we help the planning commission go through policy changes? To make this a little bit more concrete, because I'm asking a fairly abstract question at the moment. We talked a few minutes ago about whether or not we wanted to identify a local species of concern, say the Douglas squirrel. Are these the right, in deciding whether or not to regulate, uh, wildlife habitat for Douglas squirrels, are these the right categories of policy questions for us to evaluate in making a recommendation to the council? The answer may be yes, the answer may be no, but are we looking at the right set of information to make that recommendation? And again, the reason we're asking this question is to try and identify any other factors that the council members would look for us to address at the planning commission level, or any other clarifications or, or refinements of this approach. Longer term, just again, to be super transparent, our goal is to avoid having the council redo some of the work that the planning commission's gonna need to, to work through. Uh, so having these factors called out, trying to give you a solid basis for understanding the policy choice that the commission has gone through, will help us avoid, for example, bringing up a new idea at the city council that will require additional consultant time outside of our current scope to be direct about it. And, uh, maybe something that doesn't have quite the same rigorous file behind it. That's the basic question. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to the, the council.
Wendy, I see you reaching.
So, um, thank you for that. So I have a question about where the single-family residential code update might impact the critical areas ordinance, especially the tree ordinance that we adopted that was so complicated. I think those interconnected issues might be complicated, and I would turn to our arbitex and experts to help figure that out. Um, and the other question I have is about non-conforming structures as we change the critical area ordinance, what we do with them as they rebuild, remodel, expand, et cetera. So those two kind of homeowner categories, I think, are particularly interesting, so we can, um, prevent homeowners from being overly frustrated when they come in with a project.
So you're just capturing questions at this point?
I, I, yeah, I'm really just looking for the popcorn idea, if you will. If there's something you want us to, to flag, we will do it.
All right, great. Benson?
Yeah, um, thanks a lot. I really like this approach. I think it's, uh, it's methodical and basically hopefully will, um, reduce the amount of, or the incentive of the council to rewrite a lot of things. And so I'm, I'm not very hopeful sometimes, but any of that, I think it's a good, a good approach. So just a couple, uh, general questions or comments. So on the gatekeeper, I think this is sort of captured under case law, but, you know, uh, again, maybe make sure that, uh, you actually look at the RCWs and the WACS and make sure that, uh, whatever, uh, proposal was consistent with those as opposed to case law, um, or in addition to case law, I guess. And then, you know, I know that, uh, during the time I'd been on the council, everybody keeps on saying, one of the questions is always, and it was, it was on, uh, one of the, um, slides, and that is what are other jurisdictions doing? So I don't know how that is captured on this particular, um, sheet or this analysis, but, uh, that's always gonna be something that we're gonna wanna take a look at. Are we reinventing the wheel, or is somebody else, has somebody else already done it?
Bruce, we have Bruce, then Dan, then Saleem.
I'll just respond to that, so whenever you're done, though.
If you're responding to that.
Yeah, I just, to, to your question about jurisdictional, um, influence, if you look, there's three columns around code option one, code option two, and code option three. And the idea would be is, in the approach to a particular, let's say, for, using the squirrel example, because it's kind of outrageous, um, maybe there are three approaches that could be taken, and one of those might be influenced by, say, this is the city of Issaquah's way they do it, and this is how it would impact us. Here's an approach that is influenced by this other direction, um, that's something that we just came up with. And then you would use those three examples as the matrices that you then evaluate the criteria for, but, so I'm not sure we would evaluate a criteria based on how Issaquah would do something, rather that would be one of the things that we might want to evaluate, if that makes sense.
Would you identify that, this particular option, for instance, as something that Issaquah has done?
Potentially. I, I would say each one of these might be influenced by a number of, yeah, there might be multiple options influenced by various inputs. One of those inputs to an option might be what another city's doing. Versus a way that we would evaluate the effectiveness of it, we wouldn't evaluate the effectiveness of an option based on what Issaquah's done.
I understood.
Yeah.
I, I guess I still find it helpful.
Councilmember Wong, can you speak into a microphone?
I guess for me, I, I still would find it helpful if an option is described that it'd just be noted that, oh, by the way, you know, this is something, yeah.
So the concept of substantiating data, I guess.
Yeah.
Example. Okay, Bruce, then Saleem.
I mean, it's sort of a slightly different twist on the same thing, but that is, there's a historical approach we've taken to whatever that thing is, and it would be helpful to know whether we're departing a long way or a little way from what our historical, uh, precedent was. And I'm not sure whether that gets brought out as one of the options, or whether that somehow is otherwise captured here, because I'm, I'm not seeing it in the, in the categories to the left side.
Note if it's a different departure.
Yeah, well, I mean, what, so what is the, what is the status quo?
Yeah. So we, we will provide both the, the table summarizing other jurisdictions' approaches to, say, wetland buffers and our historic approach, and the proposed approach as part of your documentation.
Saleem?
So I would just ask if, if this is gonna be used, if there's a hundred or so edits, and this will be used on some subset of that, uh, is there a place for definitions in this and accounting for the existence of a definition and the fact that everybody that's evaluating this matrix at least be aware of what the definition of, you know, especially if it doesn't exist in our code? We've had that, we've had code discussions and then realized that definition didn't exist for some of the things that we were contemplating.
Yes.
The last thing I would say is, should we have a financial impact, or do you perceive that the financial impact would fall under the community financial impact? The homeowner financial impact?
I would assume it would fall under the property owner interest or the community interest, depending on the subject. So, street improvements, park improvements, presumably community interest, homeowner cost to construct, presumably a property interest. The, these are, these are high-level categories, and what I, I think we're really doing is illustrating specific items that we need to make sure are in each category.
That's actually a great segue in terms of, of my question. That is, to what extent are you looking for additional bullet points under these existing four categories to further elaborate on what they are? Because I can look at community interest, what it means to me might be very different than to somebody else. And then I assume equally the extent to which we would want to actually raise anything to a, a fifth category.
The bullet points are intended to be illustrative in this particular table. Already on my radar are things like the star matrix to look at, are there ideas there? Are there ideas in our comprehensive plan? Are there ideas coming out of other jurisdictions, other codes, other experience the consultant team or your staff can bring to the table? So we, we are trying to cast a broad net here. Really, tonight, I'm looking for specific items of interest, any baseline objections to this approach, which I've not heard yet, and then if someone identifies a fifth category, I'd, I'd like to get that on the table as well.
Okay, well, I think I would add, um, under community interest, I don't quite know how to phrase it, other than the potential in the context of, of workforce housing. Planning commissioners, I know you've been through this. Any additions?
I already put some in the papers.
Yeah, I, I think what we have here is a result.
I'm gonna pass the microphone, yeah.
Yeah, I think what we're seeing here is a result of, uh, a fair amount of work that we did, uh, in terms of, uh, pulling this together. I think initially we had, uh, like, three poles, and then we added, uh, the fourth one, uh, administration, uh, because we realized we need to have some way to make sure we don't make it incredibly complex, um, and have that be a, a balancing factor. And I figure with almost every change, it's gonna be pretty clear when we start thinking about it where the real big pluses and the real negatives are, and they kind of coalesce around these categories. But it's kind of hard to predict ahead of time what the individual bullet points would be for each one of them.
So meant to be illustrative, illustrative?
Yeah.
Okay. Luke, do you?
I think that one of the things that has been really, we found this out with the residential development standards, that, um, trying to visualize and internalize the code that we were drafting or modifying was difficult for people, and it would be, I think, helpful to be able to understand what the impacts of like a hundred-foot buffer versus a hundred and sixty-five-foot buffer, or steep slope construction, that kind of thing. I, I think that people just don't necessarily, um, sometimes they just can't grasp them, and it may, uh, save us a lot of, uh, heartburn later on when, um, it, people come back and say, I can't develop my property with these regulations. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of that. And it, while at the same time, I was just talking with Saleem about this, we need to find that balance between environmental and, uh, property issues, so just wanna...
Bruce?
I'm just disappointed you guys didn't come up with this before we did the residential code work.
We actually did. We had something similar to this.
Seems like it would have saved us some, some proof.
We just didn't, we just didn't share it with you, that's all.
Wendy?
So getting back to this wildlife habitat conservation areas, um, can we be clear about the list, whether it's comprehensive or prioritized, especially as it relates to eagles and eagle nests that may or may not still be active or abandoned? I know that's, uh, of critical interest to some residents.
Can I ask a clarifying question, councilmember? I am, I'm under the assumption that we will continue to provide some protection for bald-eagle habitat.
Absolutely.
I, I think we will have an honest conversation with the planning commission about whether or not there are any other local species of concern. I'm understanding you to say, if we identify one, we should be very clear as to what that species is. Is that correct?
Are there ten? Are there two? I mean, is bald-eagle more protected than others? What's the squirrel you're mentioning? I mean, what about the cougar? The cougar, and the deer, and raccoons, and the jolting eagles, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, you may.
If, and maybe you all discussed this, but under community interest, I would, um, want us to thoughtfully consider the, um, interests of the utilities. So we have a number of utilities in critical areas, and I would, um, you know, act, ask for your consideration to consider when we have to enter those critical areas to actually, um, improve maybe the utility, restore the utility, or something to that effect, that we have the ability to do that, um, effectively. I don't know if that's something, under maybe community interest, we consider, um, preservation and continuation of utilities or something.
I, I don't think it's articulated, but I know that the conversation was around items that were of benefit to the health and welfare of the community, which includes everything from infrastructure to, uh, so, other social, um, benefits as well. So it sort of is all encompassing, but we can articulate that better, I think. So, street improvements, park improvements, presumably community interest, homeowner cost to construct, presumably a property interest. These are, these are high-level categories, and what I, I think we're really doing is illustrating specific items that we need to make sure are in each category.
That's actually a great segue in terms of my question. That is, to what extent are you looking for additional bullet points under these existing four categories to further elaborate on what they are? Because I can look at community interest, what it means to me might be very different than to somebody else. And then I assume equally the extent to which we would wanna actually raise anything to a, a fifth category.
The bullet points are intended to be illustrative in this particular table. Already on my radar are things like the star matrix to look at, are there ideas there? Are there ideas in our comprehensive plan? Are there ideas coming out of other jurisdictions, other codes, other experience the consultant team or your staff can bring to the table? So we are trying to cast a broad net here. Really, tonight, I'm looking for specific items of interest, any baseline objections to this approach, which I've not heard yet. And then if someone identifies a fifth category, I'd, I'd like to get that on the table as well.
Okay, well, I think I would add, under community interest, I don't quite know how to phrase it, other than the potential in the context of workforce housing. Planning commissioners, I know you've been through this. Any additions?
Or puts on the papers.
Yeah, I think what we have here is a result.
I'm gonna pass the microphone, yeah.
Yeah, I think what we're seeing here is a result of a fair amount of work that we did in terms of pulling this together. I think initially, we had like three polls, and then we added the fourth one, administration, because we realized we need to have some way to make sure we don't make it incredibly complex, and have that be a balancing factor. And I figure with almost every change, it's gonna be pretty clear when we start thinking about it, where the real big pluses and the real negatives are, and they kind of coalesce around these categories. But it's kind of hard to predict ahead of time what the individual bullet points would be for each one of them.
So meant to be illustrative, illustrated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Luke, do you?
I think that one of the things that has been really, we found this out with the residential development standards, that trying to visualize and internalize the code that we were drafting or modifying was difficult for people, and it would be, I think, helpful to be able to understand what the impacts of like a hundred-foot buffer versus a hundred and sixty-five-foot buffer, or steep slope construction, that kind of thing. I, I think that people just don't necessarily, sometimes they just can't grasp them, and it may save us a lot of heartburn later on when people come back and say, I can't develop my property with these regulations. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. And it, well, at the same time, I was just talking with Saleem about this, we need to find that balance between environmental and property issues, so just wanna...
Bruce?
I'm just disappointed you guys didn't come up with this before we did the residential code work.
We actually did. We had something similar to this.
Seems like it would've saved us some sort of...
We just didn't, we just didn't share it with you, that's all.
Wendy?
So getting back to this wildlife habitat conservation areas, can we be clear about the list, whether it's comprehensive or prioritized, especially as it relates to eagles and eagle nests that may or may not still be active or abandoned? I know that's of critical interest to some residents.
Can I ask a clarifying question, councilmember? I am, I'm under the assumption that we will continue to provide some protection for bald-eagle habitat.
Absolutely.
I, I think we will have an honest conversation with the planning commission about whether or not there are any other local species of concern. I'm understanding you to say, if we identify one, we should be very clear as to what that species is. Is that correct?
Are there ten, are there two? Are these bald-eagles more protected than others? What's the squirrel you're mentioning? I mean, what about the cougar? The cougar, and the deer, and raccoons, and those little tiny eagles? I don't know.
The lost plan.
Mayor?
Yes, you may.
If, and maybe you all discussed this, but under community interest, I would want us to thoughtfully consider the interests of the utilities. So we have a number of utilities in critical areas, and I would, you know, ask for your consideration to consider when we have to enter those critical areas to actually improve maybe the utility, restore the utility, or something to that effect, that we have the ability to do that effectively. I don't know if that's something, under maybe community interest, we consider preservation and continuation of utilities, or something.
I, I don't think it's articulated, but I know that the conversation was around items that were of benefit to the health and welfare of the community, which includes everything from infrastructure to so, other social benefits as well. So it's sort of all encompassing, but we can articulate that better, I think.
Yeah, I think we started off with the individual landowner versus the public at large versus the environment as kind of our three polls, and then we started to kind of elaborate based on that. I think the, the one that we started off calling the public kind of became the community interest, right? And the one that we called the individual became the property owner interest.
Carolyn?
Yeah. In regard to wildlife, wildlife conservation areas, often nowadays, individual species aren't necessarily the focus of protection, but certain habitats, certain types of habitats that include a whole range of species. So I wondered if we could get some input and background from that perspective, instead of just focused on one particular animal.
I think people are thinking very hard, and or winding down a little. Evan, if people, if they wake up at two o'clock in the morning tonight, or Saturday this weekend, I'm guessing that there's still additional opportunity for people to provide input?
Yes, yes, please. Actually, I failed to introduce Robin Promsting, who actually put together this, this pretty slick tool, much better than what we had during the residential development standards. Resident, pardon me, Robin is the, the lead for this project. I'm, I'm kind of playing second string tonight, in her stead, if you will. So if you would like to email her, or myself, or we actually have a, an email address that's on our webpage, we have rolled out a webpage, done a soft roll at the, at this point. I believe it's C A O update at mercergov dot org. Any of those email addresses would be fine. Give us a call.
So this is a call out to the public as well as?
Yep.
Those around the table. Great. Wendy?
This is a very specific question. So any vacant lots that are left on the island for development? If we could let those homeowners know that we're doing this, so they can be aware of it well before they might wanna do something? And then also, I know that when you have a critical area, you can do averaging, like you were talking about, or there are two different ways to sort of figure out how to build in a critical area. If we could make that really clear to homeowners as they're considering which one to do, I think that would be particularly helpful. And it's one of those kind of complicated areas when you don't really know, but if we could make it clear, if you go one way, here are the impacts and opportunities, and if you go another, here's the impacts and opportunities that you can do when you do a project.
Evan, I just wanted to say, under community interest, if, if you could add the faith community and the educational community as just two that we make sure we look at, I know that there're gonna be, a large number of them are gonna be in critical areas, and I just wanna make sure that we at least have engagement around those opportunities.
Okay, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any more raised hands. I don't wanna shut down the conversation prematurely, but I think the good news is that there's a, a website, and we all know, I think, more or less, how to find the leadership here in this city. So if there's additional comments or feedback. Julie, if, if we could get maybe a little bit of a blurb in the MI Weekly out to the community, letting them know that this website does exist, if there's, if there's a question about the criteria, but preferably any additional considerations they would want us to bring in. So Evan, do we have any more responsibilities? Anything else you need from us tonight?
I think we're done for tonight, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, I think final round of questions.
Super quick. I heard that one SFR permit had an EIS. Would this code make it so that that's less likely for a homeowner to have to go through?
No. No, it, it's probably more likely rather than less. And E, and, pardon me, let me back up for a moment just to, an EIS is an environmental impact statement. The home that you're referring to is related to a house that's actually being placed in a wetland, and would result in wetland fill. It probably, this, this type of regulation would increase the likelihood, because we would have a much more clear policy of not allowing that kind of development. So we're going well outside the bounds of a normal regulation, without going into the weeds too much. There are ways to do that, in cases where to not do so would result in a taking. Most of the time, that's not gonna be our focus, because that's a very rare occurrence on the island. So there is some interrelatedness here with SEPA reviews, which is what prompts the EIS. I don't, and we can explore that further as needed.
So it doesn't sound like we're gonna really talk about the public participation plan, which is fine. I, I just had a question, though. I mean, it's identified as something that was based upon the residential development process, code process, public engagement process. Can you highlight the differences? Because obviously, you guys, from lessons learned, obviously, it's, there's some things that probably need to be improved. Can you just highlight that? And one other comment, I think the mayor mentioned, making sure that the information was put out on the MI Weekly. I'd also encourage, I was surprised by the number of people who continue, it's good, they continue to read the Mercer Island Reporter, so whatever, I, I subscribe, I subscribe. But, you know, based on the survey, I mean, a lot of people still get their information, so let's make sure we get, whatever we put on MI Weekly electronically, let's get in the reporter. But can you just highlight the differences, I guess?
Sure.
On this participation?
So I, I think there are, there are relatively few differences. The, we spoke with the planning commission about this, maybe two months ago now, as we were putting it together. The primary difference that I recall is that we had a number of community meetings, you may recall, with the residential development standards update. We tried out, I think, three different actual formats over three different meetings. The one that worked the best in my sense of this, and I think some of the commissioners, I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, also felt that the community panel approach worked the best, and so we've, we've emphasized that a little bit further in this. Community panel approach was essentially a, a panel of the commissioners sitting at a table, kind of like this at one of the schools. There was a little bit of a Q and A, and an opportunity for public comment. I think we've tried to use the multimedia approach, again, so we have thoughts around next-door press releases, Facebook press releases, putting in MI Weekly, certainly in the reporter. It's great to see the circulation there. Our website, it's a soft rollout at the moment, we're actually looking at possibly using a different website hosting tool to make it a more user-friendly experience. I, I know I'm forgetting something at this point, and, you know, the participation plan and the schedule were included in the packet more as an informative thing than something I was anticipating tonight. This is, it's intended to be adaptive, the public participation component here. We're trying to get the word out, we will undoubtedly do a mailing island-wide. We can look at things like the targeted mailing, I think I heard Commissioner, or pardon me, councilmember Weicher referred to a moment ago. We are trying to get participation. As you got a sense tonight, this is potentially a lot of change. We want the public input.
I can add if you want.
I mean, I don't know if this is, you wanna?
I, I, so speaking on behalf of the commission, and I will be so brazen as to do so, Evan can't do that, but I can. No, we, we've had conversation, and I think to reinforce the, the one element that we can take as a learning from the residential design process, was the, the traditional public hearing, where there's a presentation, there's facts and information that are given to the public ahead of time, and then they come and basically bark into a microphone for three minutes at the commission, and then you say, great, thank you very much, and you all leave, doesn't work. That's not community engagement, that's having the community digest a bunch of stuff, sometimes incorrectly, and then have questions, and not have any way of getting answers to them when they address us. And so the one thing we learned from that was really taking the time to say, hey, come up, you've got your three minutes, if you've got a question, ask it, and let's answer it. Like, let's have a dialogue about it. And it really clarified, I think, a lot of new concepts we introduced. It may not have, in all cases, led us to where we needed to be as a community, or where you, as a council, ended up deciding to go, but I think that the process that led us there through that was invaluable. And so it's something we certainly look to recreate this time, and if I am speaking out of turn of the other commissioners, you know, please step up. But I think we all really felt that that was a super effective tool to use through that process, and intend to use it again.
I was at that meeting, and I thought it was really good.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And I'd highly, I'd highly encourage the council to adopt some more, when necessary.
Luke, do you?
I can't emphasize enough how important community education is, because it just feels like people come out of the woodwork with a lot of misinformation, and then it gets amplified, and then it really kind of derails everything we're trying to do. So that's one thing, but I noticed in here, you talked about bracketing the questions, you know, sort of giving context, like, we're doing this because it's part of the Growth Management Act, et cetera. And I think it's really important to reinforce that, so that people, when they have comments to make, can make them from a position of information. I mean, I'm still battling some of the misinformation that is being diffused in the community with respect to the residential development standards. And it's not your fault or our fault, it's kind of a nature, the nature of the beast, but that feels like it's a really important component.
Part of the contract we have with ESA is actually to provide improved video educational materials. You may recall there were a series of YouTube videos which were embarrassing to some of us.
Those were awesome.
They were. I have the words. I, I am hoping that ESA gives us some material, and this is part of their contract. We are looking at putting together some great videos as part of this tool. I, I think this is an area where building on our educational outreach is going to be pretty slick, and I'm excited for it, so.
Well, I think I'm gonna go ahead and, and close, but definitely close with a huge thank you, because I know that there's a tremendous amount of work in front, you know, of the planning commission. And I, I know that you were really gonna be on the front lines in terms of answering the initial set of questions and the feedback that comes from the public. So from me, very much a thank you, and the extent to which I, or I'm sure fellow council members can help support and or participate, please don't hesitate to reach. We look forward to continuing to work with you and your organizations over the next couple of months. And Evan, Robin, in particular, thanks in advance for what's probably gonna be a fairly intense couple of months. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks.
Au revoir.
Everyone knows that this is...